We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:35 on October 15th for our Sherwin School Committee Meeting. First, do we have any community comments? I think there being none. We initially had on the agenda for our co-presidents Molly Toller and Hannah Ireland from the CSA of Pine Hill to speak, but unfortunately, they are not feeling well. They're sick, so I told them they can keep this short thread at home and they will report it in November. They said they would have more items to give us. As for that, Dr. Brown is sick as well, so that's our next attended item.
So glad we're not meeting at Pine Hill tonight.
Yes, so clearly, there's something at Pine Hill, so be very careful when you go in. So instead, I was wondering, because if you had reviewed your packet, I'm sure you did. They talked about all of Dr. Brown's reports. She talked about homework at Pine Hill, which I thought was really neat. So I didn't know if there was anything that she wanted to pull us in on.
Yes, so because we have the joint meeting next week, and we have a Dover meeting right before, and then this one right before that, obviously, I'm going to give a more general superintendent's report, and so will Beth at that meeting. And Beth, by the way, is not sick. She is attending another meeting in order to kind of touch all the bases around the portrait of graduate. One of the pieces of feedback that we received in her first kind of rollout from the school committee members from across the three districts was they really felt strongly that enough of a base don't know what it is, and so Beth, you only have to ask her once. She's out there, so tonight, she's actually meeting with the Friends of Performing Arts, so FOPA, and kind of reviewing that, hopefully. So she asked me if it was okay, I hope you kind of saw it in mind, because I know she wasn't doing it right. So we're spreading our slates out. Yes, there are a few things that I would like to mention to the school committee. First and foremost, we did have our first meeting of the task force that's looking into the access road, completion of the access road to Pine Hill. It's a lean group, small, Barbara, myself, Ashan Kueen, who's the head of DPDW, Rick Thompson, the chief of police, and David Williams. Unfortunately, David couldn't make that meeting, but we did have quite an exchange back and forth about next steps. And one of the things that we will be doing this week is actually meeting with engineers from an organization called Green International. They are not the people who did the drawings last time. This was drawn up, I believe, four years ago. I should know the exact date, I'm sorry I don't, but it was a while back when, who was our chair?
Frank Hess.
Thank you. Frank Hess was very instrumental in that whole process. Drawings were put together, it went to a town meeting vote, and you needed a two-thirds majority for this to go through, and it missed by just a handful. So we think the time is right to bring this back. So we will meet with these engineers. They'll look at, obviously, the drawings that have been done, but I actually asked that I be there for that, because I want to walk through this site, having been through a few construction projects of my own and seen layouts for parking lots, especially at high schools, which is typically where you have the issues, but we're looking at a reverse effect potentially, with people, more people driving in the mornings. I'm anticipating that, I don't know that for sure, just a hunch. I just think the earlier school starts, the more likely families will drive, just to squeeze out whatever time they can to extend their morning at home. So I don't know if that'll hold true, I think it will. This isn't the main reason for this initiative, and I need to make that really clear. The purpose for this is because we do think we have a safety issue there. We know that in the event of emergencies, people are trapped up there, and the road in its current state is really not terrific, right? I don't know that I'd want big buses rolling down there. There's not any kind of sidewalk access. The fact that we're parking the way we are and using that front end as a two-way road with cars along the side and buses trying to get through and other lines of traffic, it is not a safe situation.
It's really dangerous in afternoon pickup.
It really is.
And you think about the car line waiting there, I've witnessed this so many times, the people are waiting in car line to pick up their kids, and you have cars parked on the, you know, the side of the road that's coming down, and then you have someone who doesn't want to wait in the car line who's coming to school for a meeting or something, so they try to drive up, and then there's a bus coming down at the same time, and they, I mean, you know, it's very, there's not room for people to maneuver around each other and see around that corner there.
And then the teacher's taking the names in car line, and I'm always scared that person's going to get hit by a bus.
Yeah.
It's really scary.
So, but as we think about it, this is why it's so important, and this is why I want to kind of walk through this with them. We don't want to set up a situation where it's one way, everybody kind of converges on the place in a very quick slice of time, which is what happens at the high school, for those of you who've experienced it. Everyone converges at about 7:20, and they're gone at about 7:40. But when they go, they all come together, and it quickly turns into three kind of unstructured lanes. And people say to their kids, "Just jump out here." And kids are jumping out, and these cars are moving, and those are stopped, and I've seen accidents up there, I saw fender benders, but many times, actually, through the years. So I'm worried about us making sure that whatever it is we come up with is done right. I'm thinking probably a drop-off area, very much separate from the bus's drop-off area, so that they're not ever co-mangling.
Yes.
And the same thing for pickups. But all of that has to be done by the professionals. So this is just really the start of it, but we're feeling good about that. We're also looking into, as best we can, any kinds of funds that would be out there, or that have been secured in the past by the town, kind of earmarked, but never utilized. So that's another thing that David Williams is following up on. So I'm feeling pretty good about it, cautiously optimistic, and I just wanted to bring it to speed on that. I also wanted to tell you, I hope you noticed, that we did hear your concerns about the landscaping in front of the building, and Dawn, thank you very much, was able to work with some folks to get that cleaned up, and I do think it made a big difference. There may be some more long-term work that needs to be done, but it really did need to be cleaned up for the immediate term, so.
It looks much, much better.
Yeah, there needs to be annual maintenance, which wasn't happening, so we have spoken with the town about potentially them taking on the annual maintenance now that we've done the bulk of green, right? So we'll work with them over that, and then we'll take a peek to at what landscaping is still there. Actually, I was surprised that after they weeded, there was a little bit of landscaping there. And see what we need to do from that perspective. We'll let it go through the winter and see what comes back up.
It really looked nice, though, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Dawn. Had an interesting conversation with, well, I wasn't actually speaking, I was listening, this morning, Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito were in Framingham talking about grants, safety grants, that the state has been giving out, and Framingham was awarded a fairly significant grant, and area superintendents were invited for the conversation. I will say, I felt really good about the things that we've done recently, in the past few years, you know, with the training and with the kind of the more securing of our facilities, and making sure people go through the front entrance at Pine Hill. It's an inconvenience, but it's, I think, this is about making sure that our kids stay safe. And we had our emergency response team meeting, I think it was last week, maybe two weeks ago. So those meetings will continue to take place with all the counseling staff, administrators, and the representatives from the police, usually Harry from the Dover Police Department, but James Cavino's come in the past as well. Sherwin doesn't have a designated resource officer, Dover does, so it's easier for Harry to make it, but those have been good conversations. It all came down to the very same thing that I had been saying. It was nice to hear them say it, and that is that the relationships with the children are the most important thing. The most important thing in terms of ensuring their well-being and making sure that they're connected. I thought it was interesting that when we were, this summer, doing our training and preparing for the year and talking about evaluation of teachers and teaching standards, we, as a leadership team, agreed that this is so hugely important. So we actually talked, we looked at all the state standards, or our standards, our rubric for evaluation, and said, "Okay, well, where do we speak to, you know, relationships with kids in the state standards or our standards?" Currently, we have our own, they're similar to the state's, but we really don't speak to that, which I think is fascinating, because you'd think that that would be kind of a critical, non-negotiable, for anyone who's working with young people, to be able to demonstrate an ability to form relationships with these kids. So I let them know that, I thought that was important, and we are on it. We're totally, I think Pine Hill School does not suffer for a shortage of healthy relationships. It's a very warm and nurturing place, but we want that, you know, to permeate the entire system. So just wanted to let you know that that meeting took place today, it was very good. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is the triple E thing is still on our radar, unfortunately, it has not gone away. I contemplated playing together a slide, it's so readily accessible to people through the Mass Department of Public Health, and it shows where the Department of Agriculture has sprayed and done its aerial spraying. You know, the mosquitoes do go dormant, from what I'm hearing, when you start getting below 50 degrees. Like, you're not going to see a lot of mosquito activity tonight, but in order for them to be knocked out, we need to have a 38-degree or lower evening for four hours, and we have not come close to that.
I think it's forecasted, though. We were expecting, I did see an alert come up that we might get a blast.
Tonight?
It's after the rain comes in this week?
Yeah, I don't know if it's.
Oh, okay, good. Well, that would be nice. So that's kind of hindered some of our activities. We bumped a lot of our September stuff out into October. It's a real struggle, because you want to be safe, safety-conscious, but you also want the kids to enjoy some of these experiences and not be frozen to their core. So, but I think, I think we have struck the balance, and I think we're doing okay, but I certainly am open to any kinds of questions or concerns if people at home are wondering, you know, where we are on the triple E. They could certainly write to me, and I'll give them as much information as I can. I do want people to know that I don't work in isolation. I'm not an expert on these things. I trust the Board of Health, and they've been very helpful to me as well.
I was actually wondering, so, and I may be mistaken in this, but it's my understanding that when this disease comes up, it's usually a three-year cycle? And so are we thinking now about how we would plan, or starting to think about how we would plan for next fall, assuming that we are in the spring, assuming that we might have, we might be facing this issue again in the near future?
Probably not as much as you might like, but certainly, that has crossed my mind. It's also crossed my mind in terms of how it's going to impact us when we make these start time changes.
That might be more of a question for the athletic directors and things, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think that a lot of what I'll talk about next week, and this is the last thing I was going to mention, is that I'll do my start times kind of overview of where we are, and the start times work, and Amanda's on that task force with us. So there's a, there's been a lot of work done and a lot of conversations, and I think the gist of it is making sure that we don't hit September and say, "What are we going to do about this thing?" And that would be one of them. So what are we going to do about adjusting our athletic field use and throw into that mix that it might be hindered by the fact that, that the, you know, that this.
Start times.
The finish times have to be at least a half hour or more. I've gotten different opinions on that. We were working off the half hour before sunset, because the sunset was the time that the Mass Department of Public Health was saying, everything should be done and over by sunset. So we went a half hour before that, rather than just setting a time so that it's always moving with the sunset. At this time, it's really getting.
It's early, yeah.
Right. I mean, it's, it's getting earlier, you're right, earlier and earlier, so.
It's challenging.
Yes, so this is one of those things that we're just going to have to, you know, collectively wrap our heads around. It's a challenge, we don't, even with lights, that doesn't solve your problem.
Well, no, because then that's just distracting all the schools.
So it's, it's, I think that the number one thing that they say is cover up and use the bug spray, really use the bug spray. Some people don't want to do that. So I really think at the end of the day, it's going to, it's going to mean people are going to probably have to make some hard choices for their own families' comfort levels, because there's only going to be so much sun sometime. And you're right, this is supposedly a cycle. It went around, it does like about a three-year cycle typically. So, but yes, it's on our minds.
Thank you. I do know that fifth grade for Pine Hill moved their Hail reservation.
Yes.
Because it was supposed to be in September, and it's at the end of October, so I'm hoping that freeze.
Sixth grade did too.
I'm hoping that freeze comes quickly.
Yeah, I would imagine by the end of October.
Yeah, we should be fine.
Well, if we don't have a freeze, it should be pretty chill.
Yeah.
At least in the I Q for all. It does, but you know, you do notice that, like, this weekend was a good example. You go outside at school in the shade, but I went for a walk over at Midfield State, and it warmed up, and I did get buzzed by the mosquito.
Yep.
So I was just joking about it with my wife, and I literally heard mosquito by my ear, so they are still out there.
They are.
So just have to be really diligent.
So next, so since we don't have Dr. Brown's report, all her happenings are on there in the homework at Pine Hill, but the warrant report is in there, too, for those that are so inclined to see what bills were paid. I went through all of them. Dawn had gone through them first. I love Dawn's very neat organization of all my receipts, so thank you.
As Dawn has mentioned, you know, you can always, should always feel free to go and.
Pull those if you'd like, right? Knowing that the originals are here, but we have copies of everything at Central Office.
And if anyone ever wants to join me, you're welcome to do that. So next, we're going to go on to the financial report.
Exactly. So in your packet, you have your first look at where we stand for fiscal year '20, which is just in time to start kicking off '21, right? So I barely get time to share with you what's going on in '20, and we're already talking about '21. But what you can tell is in the salaries, we're able to encumber everything that we know, so that really gives you a picture of where we are. Two things that we don't encumber, as I noted in the report, are substitutes and custodial overtime, but other than that, you're seeing what the annual expenditure will be for majority of our staff. Similar to last year, you'll see a red number for teachers under the special education, but that literally is just a matter of how we're paying some of our speech and extra speech and extra PT. So what I plan to do before your next meeting, and I'll bring it forward to you, is do a transfer of your budget line items from the, down in the expenditure line, where you see a surplus right now of almost $75,000. A chunk of that's going to come up to salaries, and that way, we don't have to keep explaining it. And that's probably more in line with currently how we are bringing those individuals in to serve the students, so that'll be more accurately reflected. So we'll do that by next time, and then we're pretty much in line with budget. The one area where we still could potentially see some movement is in the educational assistance. Is that still settling for what student needs are? So I potentially could anticipate letting, telling you we might be a little negative in that arena, but I'll know more next month for you. On the expenditure side, again, that's just we sort of encumber what we know, but a lot of that sort of, sort of stays in the budget remaining as the year goes along, so you'll just see that whittling away a little bit each time I report to you. The good news is on your audit district, with where we stand today, we're actually running ahead of budget by about $130,000 in tuitions, and that's made up of multiple changes and placements. I will give you more detail on that. There's our report, if you remember, that shows you how many placements we budgeted for, where they stand, and what grades they are. So I will have that for you in November when we roll the budget out, but that's actually promising news for us right now. We are running a little behind in transportation services, and again, that's just how, how some of the students' transportation. If you remember, we, we had these numbers developed in February. A lot happens between February and where we are now, and I'll give you a little more background on that. But all in all, we're looking pretty healthy. One thing I don't have yet, because they're still slowly releasing it, is what our actual circuit breaker reimbursement is going to be for fiscal year '20, so that'll be a number, hopefully, that I will bring forward there. Releasing a little bit more of those certified reports by the end of October.
I was going to ask when they usually release.
Yeah, usually, they're a little behind, because they held up some things for some additional reviews.
Okay.
But I'll have that for you, and it shouldn't be extremely different than what we thought. And I just reminded you that in that $340,000, $315,000 is coming from current year circuit breaker reimbursement, and then 65% was left over from the prior year, so that's what makes up your 340. And we're hoping we'll have a little bit more, obviously, to be a cushion for any unknown placements, unexpected placements, but also helps you in your next year's budget, too.
I was going to ask, do you, do you ever have like a snapshot or a preview into what do you think next year's circuit breaker will be? Because I know it varies sometimes.
Yeah, I think we're getting closer to where it's going to be 75% every year. Then you just have to analyze your replacements and actually do a calculation. It's case by case.
Yeah.
And so that's sort of what we do. So in July, the first week of July, our special education department actually files the circuit breaker filing, and it's student by student by student.
And we will occasionally be audited by the state.
Yes, in fact, Sherwin has been selected to be audited this year, or last year.
So they make sure that they're going case by case, we have to do case by case.
Okay.
It's a pretty tight line.
It is, it is.
Any questions on your first snapshot fiscal year '20?
That being said, just to let everybody know as well, we'll do, we'll start giving input into the budget next month, correct?
Uh, no, you're, this month.
This month.
Because you will get your budget next month.
We'll get our budget next month. So anything that you can think of that we need to be considering for budget, we need to give that input into Dawn, because next month, we'll get what she is placing the budget.
Yeah, you'll get your first draft, and not that you can't continue, you know, we work on the budget from November until March, but it's good if you've got some bigger ideas that we try to incorporate those in the first pass versus down the road.
Okay. Because we need to look at any of the capital projects that we have, but I think.
Right, so we'll bring forward our first pass of capital in November, too. So we will pull together your capital subcommittee and go over that prior to that.
Okay. All right.
We've been already working on that with Mr. Kelly and Peter.
Okay.
So we have some ideas, so they're already sort of getting some quotes on some things, so that when we sit down with you guys, we actually have numbers.
We have numbers, that'd be great. Okay, so, is that all we have, Dawn? So next is, and there's the enrollment report, too.
Yeah, so that, I mean, just to reiterate, that, you know, October 1st is when we have to submit our numbers to the state. It's when we, they expect you to have harder numbers. We have found that actually, between October and November last year, we had a pretty significant shift in, at the region, in that, that little stretch. So, you know, they're always a work in number, a work in progress. It's not especially concrete, but just as an example, we did have one, one more student join us between now and the last time I reported you. So we picked up a second grader in, I believe, custodians class. And so those little numbers can really tip things. In this particular case, it came at the right grade level, so we're within our, our parameters of 18 to 23 in the K through 3, and 20 to 25 in the 4-5. That's our policy for class size. So we watch this closely. The town watches it closely. We, as we begin to enter the budget process, we look at how many kids Dover is sending into the region, how many kids Sherwin is sending into the region, because that impacts your assessments. So we watch that all along through the year, and that is part of the book as well. Is it a part of the initial budget book?
So the assessment only affects the region.
Right, oh, that's right, it's in the region's book.
Yeah, but I will say, so the projection models that we will bring forward do use October 1st as the base, if you remember. So that, that calculation shows the in-migration, out-migration from October 1st to the next October 1st. So even though like January, typically, we see another influx of kids, that projection model takes that into account.
It's held pretty consistent.
Exactly, so that's why we use October 1st as the base for that, knowing that the model takes into effect what happens the other months of the year, so.
And it's, it's not an exact science. Our projections were not perfect, but they were pretty close.
Yeah, I think the three-year so far has been in all the, on all three districts was pretty.
That's most reliable.
Yep.
Definitely. So just wanted to kind of recap that and make sure that you know that we're paying attention to that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, go ahead. Can I ask a question? And maybe it's too soon to think about this or talk about this, but in terms of thinking about projections for next year, would we be at least third grade at, the incoming fourth grade at four sections?
Well, the present third grade. Yeah, so we'll do the projections and see where the numbers land, and a lot of times we don't make those calls until like January or February. So we'll probably budget everything like it is now, wait a little bit longer and see what happens, and then it's usually after that time that we'll make decisions about section, number of sections. You also, as long as we think that the total kids, you can also have like a floater teacher in there. So let's wait and see how, we know someone may need four, or someone, right, so let's keep a floater teacher in there and see how it all.
You have to check that.
See how it, exactly.
That makes sense. Does it work?
Those, the projection process that we go through, I think is pretty good. I, and did you add another section to that, Dawn, that we started doing last year? Because that, I thought was really good.
So I think here, because you've been on the cusp on a couple, I sort of do that little chart for you that shows, you know, what would happen and where you're, where you're, highlight where you are vulnerable and where you couldn't cut a section, because then it would be above or below. So depending on how tight we are with the numbers, you know, we'll, we'll do that, but that's something, again, like I said, we do like in the January, February meeting for the budget when everything's a little more settled. And of course, kindergarten is always sort of the unknown. If you remember, we thought we were going to have, granted, we have a larger kindergarten this year than we have in the past, but initially, they were thinking something was going to be in the 70s. So that's one of those things you just sort of have to wait to see how it plays out.
And it's a test for, for school committee, because people will ask you, "Are you going to add a section if you can't afford to have such and such?" And those numbers are, we, we count on the projections, because they usually hold true, and they did this year, just as a reminder. Do you remember how many people were concerned about the kindergarten numbers and that it wasn't going to be sustainable? And I'm not saying that 21, 22, 22 is, is the perfect number, but we had people concerned about us being up beyond that, well beyond that, and it didn't happen. It was that close, but it didn't happen. So I, it's really hard, I think, and I was a Sherwin school committee member, it's, it's hard to say to people, "Well, we, you know, we follow the process here," because emotions take over, and, but we always, we do, I think Sherwin historically has done ultimately what's best for the kids, but they also have, you know, financial realities, so we will, we'll take it seriously and we'll walk through it with you, so that you're at least aware of why we're doing what we're doing.
All right. So, next thing we have to do is the approval of our. So next thing we have to do is the approval of our minutes from the meeting of September 17th. Has everybody had a chance to get them? Were there any changes or corrections that you saw that needed to be made? From my recollection, it looked correct. So if they are correct, could I get a motion for approval of the minutes? And seconds?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so those were approved. So the other things in there are just for your reading pleasure. The regional minutes from June 11th, because at first I looked at this, I thought, "That was a long time ago." So I read through all of that. So you can just read those and see what's going on in Dover and the regional committee from June 11th to September 10th. Next is any agenda items that you may see for the November 12th meeting? Or anything that you see that needs to be put on? If you can email them to me, and I'll make sure that we get them on the agenda. So that'll be our first look at our budget. And we'll have, hopefully, our Pine Hill co-chairs will be here for that meeting as well. Hopefully, whatever illness is going around will abate.
Can I add one thing? I think that at the joint meeting, was it the joint meeting where people asked to just have names listed as opposed to assigning genders?
Yes.
So I'm going to circle back with Cheryl on that. I just didn't want you to think I've forgotten that, because I can see that these minutes don't necessarily reflect that.
Some of them do. The Sherburne School Committee meeting, I think, does. I think you were...
Some of them are older, but I just want you to know that. I heard that, and we're on it.
If that was the June meeting, I don't know.
Oh, no, I see. Still here. So just certain names. Yep.
I was just going to say Megan Page nominated someone so...
We'll probably do that one before, because those events had already been prepared.
Right, yeah.
And Amy actually will see this on the tape, so.
That's right.
You want to ask Dr. Cheryl?
With that being said, I was going to see if we could pull into executive session. We need to discuss some contracts, this superintendent's contract, and discuss our collective bargaining, and we're not going to return to open session. So I'd have to have a verbal yes from each of you or no from each of you, whether or not you want to pull to go into executive session, not to return to open session.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. So there we go.
Very good.
Thank you all very much. I finally got that language right.